And it's between how it depends on how you. That's true.
So I was in your board of commissioners meeting now officially. Commissioner Boone and your leaders and education.
Good morning, Father. Thank you, Lord, for being with us today. Thank you, dear Lord, for waking us up this morning and starting us on our way to the future. Father God, I ask you to be with us during this meeting. Lord, let something be said and done to the betterment of the town of Sauer City. Please know the blessings I ask in Jesus' name.
Amen. Your John is in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Brown, if you will give us our mission statement?
To advance the framework for our success through balanced governance, dynamic partnerships, and engagement.
Commissioner Howser, if you'll read our vision statement?
Sauer City is a safe, prosperous, vibrant community where diversity, innovation, and education drive success in a globally competitive society.
Thank you. Oh, any adjustments to the agenda?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
I don't, but Christian faith does, yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we move public comment to number four right after consent agenda and make everything else go down by one second.
Remove the public second, then remove our public comment. All in favor, let it be known by sound about all opposed having the same right here in motion carried.
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda, sir.
Consent agenda has been moved in properly second. All in favor, let it be known by sound about all opposed having the same right here in motion carried. Public comment, can you? Ms. Moon, if you'll come up, state your name and address.
Good evening. I am Liz Mooney. I live at Seventeen Rebecca Lane in Sauer City. I'm here on behalf of Mount Air. I just want to let you know what a wonderful board we have. We had our Thanksgiving for Thousands event this past Saturday while we packed nine thousand five hundred boxes for a family of four for meals for the Thanksgiving holiday. And I wanted to let you know how wonderful it was to have all of our commissioners come by in some capacity of either having a box to give away or to help pack boxes. So we've got some wonderful commissioners in our town and just thank you so much for all that you do for us and really appreciate you coming out every year to help us with this event.
And you have your Easter one coming up.
Easter is March twenty-second.
How many did you do last year?
Last year, we did six thousand five hundred at Easter. So close to ten and close to getting closer to ten at Easter as well. All of you are invited on our Christmas Day to pack boxes and meet people and have a great time. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you, my kids.
All right. Number four, our open presentation. For those of you that don't know, Commissioner Fairley chose not to run again. And this will be his last official meeting. And we thought it not wrong, Lee, to actually thank him for his years of service. Exactly how many?
Twelve.
Twelve years of service and he served as my mayor pro tempore. And I cannot at all thank him enough. So from my family to you, Commissioner, this is a little token of our appreciation for everything that you've done because you made the job so much easier working with you.
Thanks, sir.
And now we have a presentation from the town.
And from the town of Sauer City, this presented to Mr. Louis Fairley in grateful appreciation for your dedicated service. Board of Commissioners, two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and twenty-three, and Mayor Pro Tempore, two thousand and twenty-three to two thousand and twenty-five, we want to thank you for your service.
We'll get a picture with the.
I want everybody to get here.
Because this is, this is not a job of one person. This is, this is eight people coming together to lead the town. Yes, please. The faces have changed over eight years, but the direction has always been the same. We always move forward for the benefit of the town. The prayer, a similar prayer that Commissioner Boone said this morning has always said that we could do something for the benefit of our town. And that's been our goal every day since I've been on this board and before.
Don't, don't move. Chief, if you would come forward with your presentation.
Good evening, Mayor. Board of Commissioners, and everyone that's here. I got here about two years ago and ever since then, I guess I'd call you Louis now. He has been a big supporter of the police department, but also serving some other committees and so forth with him. He truly cares about the people, yes. I mean, and when I say people, I mean everybody. And I've had the pleasure of witnessing that and I greatly appreciate everything you've done for the police department and provided counsel to me at times when I needed it. And so I wanted to give you a little something. It's from the police department's certificate of appreciation presented to Louis Fairley in appreciation for your twelve years of service and support to the citizens of Sauer City and the Sauer City Police Department during your tenure as a Sauer City Board of Commissioner.
Thank you. I appreciate it. You're not conceding to me. But I do want to thank the support of the town's staff. They work tirelessly. This iteration plus all the other iterations we've had, and this board works incredibly hard. Now, I'm going to take a moment to thank my family. They're sitting in the back. They put up with me for twelve years. So appreciate your patience while we've been doing this. And you know, when, when I started, because Mayor and I had to talk about rerunning and my wife and I.
It's all right.
It's a, it's a bonus. Who knows? Larry Chee, why she was left, but they have achieved since her pets. And so now it's time to move on to the next phase. And so I just want to thank everybody here.
We have a few minutes, so I'm going to open it up to the board if they would like to make any remarks based on Commissioner Fairley's time on the board. We have our judge who is a few minutes out. So I'm going to give the board and the staff, if you'd like to have a few words while we're waiting on her arrival.
Appreciate everything you did.
Learned a lot of little intricacies with the legal details from Louis Fairley. It's been a very helpful experience for me in the short two years.
Well, it's been a pleasure to observe you today.
I can only hope I make it to twelve years. But I have really appreciated Louis's thoroughness, his good decisions and information. And I've come to admire that. Thank Louis for your service.
That's certainly Joe Louis. I hear time. I'll be right there. So he did some legal work for me and my traveling. And he did great and I really appreciate it.
I met Louis several years ago. He probably does not remember. But when our former Mayor Pro Tempore Larry Chee asked me to work on the Bray Park Plan for the swimming pool. He was very vocal about what he wanted to see. And there was the bubble we talked about for the swimming pool. But it's been great working with Louis and I will be serving with Louis on another committee anyway. So I'll still see him and get to hear him talk. But it's been, been a joy. Thank you, Louis.
I'd like to thank him for our family. We have really enjoyed him coming in back. He'll come back. He's been so helpful to my son down there.
Yes, he has. And I guess I'll end it with the fact that for those of you that don't know, Louis will call you at seven o'clock in the morning and start your day off for you.
Sometimes before that.
Yeah. You know, you, you almost sit your watch by the fact that that's Louis. And so we have worked well together. I remember the first time that I actually met him. And for those of you that don't know, there's a mural downtown depicting Black History on Birch Avenue. And when we made the presentation, Louis is the man that, well, dissected and put it back together and dissected again. And so all his points of reverence gets a little, was really frustrating that night. And I'm like, do I really like this guy? But I understood much later exactly what he was trying to do. And that was to make sure everything was done, as they say, in decency and order. And I appreciate that fact about him. If you've ever been to these meetings and watched his questioning of different things that we are doing, he's no stone unturned. I attribute that to the lawyer in him, but I also attribute that to the man he is. That's, that's how he views the world, is looking at it through a different lens and all the possibilities. And that's what's made him a great commissioner and an asset to myself. So again, Louis, we really appreciate you and family. Because he brought his daughter in last year and she done our first ever Olympic-style swimming lessons. She is a Olympic bowler, for those of you that don't know. And she volunteered to give lessons the last summer, which really went well. So he, he, he not only gives of himself, but he's taught his family to do the same thing. And that is a great quality. When you can say, look, and if I'm not mistaken, I don't want to miss this stuff. I think it's Gina.
Gina, yes, sir.
Gina, yeah. And so it's just fantastic group of people. And giving of yourself is what this job is all about. So again, sir, thank you and go with God's.
Thank you again.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Jack, if we could. Let's drop down to the two thousand and twenty-six calendar, then we'll work our way back up.
Real quick on the accountants on your desk. We'll point out tomorrow at six o'clock, we're going to have our next Main Street public meeting. Downtown is our, our supervisor. The third or fourth rendition of public meetings and getting input from the public about our Main Street progression. Obviously, this week you got the Christmas parade and tree lighting on Thursday downtown at seven o'clock. On Sunday, they have the Christmas market tree lighting in downtown. That's from one o'clock to five thirty. Skidoo is having a Merry Thank You from Skidoo on December eleventh, so Thursday, from twelve to five. That's at the Wellness Center. And the last thing I want to share with the board is employee Christmas lunch is December sixteenth, seven thirty to two thirty. My best food cafeteria. The board's invited. Do you have anything else to add?
Yes. So on December fourth, the Christmas parade, Brianna's going to be sending out a group text to everyone to let you know where you get on the float and who wants to be a part of it. Okay? So she'll send that out probably to tomorrow. Yeah, tomorrow. And everybody just let her know and she'll let you know where to be and what time and by the what.
We're still going down on that.
It's going to be in the trailer. The Parks and Rec trailer. Yeah. And they let you sit in the front.
I do remember last year it was bitter cold and bitter cold.
Or it might just be the same way, man. Looking at it right now.
Okay, I'm going.
Be about forty thirty, be about forty thirty three to set.
Make it a little bit fairer. Barry up for you, Wendy.
Well, it's Christian wolf. You got things that are full of cheese.
Well, we're fixing to do the administering of all the office. Our esteemed judge is here with us now and so if we can prepare for that.
Judge Mack will call everyone individually in order of the agenda book that we have. And then when she calls you up, you more than often should use your own Bible. Or if you're a firm, you don't have to use your Bible and bring your family members up with you as well.
Thank you. First of all, I'm going to apologize. So we were had some minor technical difficulties. So thank God for travel and mercy. And I too had to go far this morning. So I'm running from Stateville, filing, and then from Raleigh. So we thank God for travel mercy and a minor accident that God gave us angels and kept around us that we will not hurt harm their dangers. So I thank God for this opportunity to come down here and be with family. So at this time, May, are you ready?
On the way, I want to thank her taking the time out of her busy schedule to come up here from Babel to do this. This is family. And family normally takes care of family. So Jimmy, uh. Messiah. What I have chosen to do today with these young men is we have a couple of generations here and they're both on both sides of the family. My uncle represents my mother's side of the family along with this young man. And these two represent my father's side of the family. So I thought it would be appropriate to bring them together on this day. So Malik, if you and Uncle Jimmy would step out and hold the Bible, I will take the oath. While you hold it, you stand right here with me. You stand right here with me.
I'll be the first. At this time, if you would raise your right hand and if you would repeat after me, I state your name.
I, Don Matthews.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties.
Execute the duties.
Of the office.
Of the office.
Of Mayor of the town of Sauer City.
Of Mayor of the town of Sauer City.
As appointed.
As appointed.
To me.
To me.
In North Carolina general statute.
In North Carolina general statute.
One sixty-eight dash sixty-seven.
One sixty-eight dash sixty-seven.
And I will support the Constitution.
And I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
That I will be faithful.
That I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And I will endeavor to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of North Carolina.
The Constitution of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent.
Not inconsistent.
With the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, May.
Oh, wait.
Yeah, y'all come back real quick. I thought y'all weren't doing that.
We were, but you couldn't see we were in.
Why? Oh, I'm so sorry. But I still love it just the same. You are holding Bible. That's right. There you go. Right hand. So it's in the Bible. Will you write? You'll repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will well and truly.
I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of the office. Oh, Commissioner of the town of Sauer City. As appointed to me. In North Carolina general statute. One sixty-eight dash sixty-seven. I will support the Constitution. And the laws of the United States.
Laws of the United States.
That I will faithful and bear.
faithful and bear.
True allegiance.
True allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina. And to the constitutional powers. And authorities. Which are or may be established. For the government thereof. Thereof. And I will, and that I will endeavor to support. Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of North Carolina. Not inconsistent with. The Constitution of the United States. To the best of my knowledge. Ability. So help me God. Congratulations. Okay, your granddaughter, your granddaughter is amazing. Your granddaughter is amazing. She's part of the nest. When she's in the nest, that's all that matters.
That's right.
As long as she's in the nest, she's amazing. That's right. Commissioner Bray. She looked at on the Bible. That's right. You'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Cynthia B. Bray.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Swear.
Swear.
That I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
Of Commissioner. Of the town of Sauer City. As appointed, as appointed.
As appointed.
To me.
To me.
In North Carolina general statute.
In North Carolina general statute.
One sixty-eight dash sixty-seven.
One sixty-eight dash sixty-seven.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
I, that I will be faithful.
I will be faithful.
And bear true allegiance.
And bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
State of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
That are.
That are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of North Carolina.
North Carolina.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution.
Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
My knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God. Congratulations, Commissioner. Right here, right here. It's on there. Commissioner Fraser. Okay, that's fine. That is quite fine. If you will raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Michael Feser.
Michael C. Feser.
Michael C. Feser.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Do solemnly and sincerely.
Affirm that I will well and truly.
That I will well and truly.
Execute the duties of the office.
Execute the duties of the office.
Of commissioner of the town of Silver City.
Of commissioner of the town of Silver City.
As appointed to me.
As appointed to me.
In North Carolina general statute.
In North Carolina general statute.
One sixty eight dash sixty seven.
One sixty eight dash sixty seven.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States.
And the laws of the United States.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And to the constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
That are.
That are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to, to support.
And I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of North Carolina.
The Constitution of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability.
And ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Commissioner. Thank you so much. Congratulations. And your mayor pro temp.
We got it. Not yet.
Will be decided momentarily. I do have it.
I nominate Cindy Bray for mayor pro temp.
Excuse me. I nominate Travis Patterson for mayor pro temp. Sir. Second. Sir. I didn't hear a second for Cindy. That's why I made a motion for Travis Patterson.
It's been moved to probably second that Mayor Pro Temp be filled by Commissioner Travis Patterson. All in favor, let it be known by sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right. Here in none, motion carried.
Would you like for me to write it in?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Spell your first name.
T R E. T R E.
Last name?
T T. T R.
Thank you, Mr. President. You'll repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Travis Patterson.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
Do solemnly and sincerely swear.
That I will well and truly execute.
That I will truly execute.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
Of Mayor Pro Temp.
Of Mayor Pro Temp.
Of the town of Silver City.
Of the town of Silver City.
As appointed to me.
As appointed to me.
In North Carolina general statute.
In North Carolina general statute.
One sixty eight dash sixty seven.
One sixty eight dash sixty seven.
I will support the Constitution.
I'll support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
That I will be faithful and bear true allegiance.
To the state of North Carolina.
To the state of North Carolina.
And to the constitutional powers.
And constitutional powers.
And authorities.
And authorities.
Which are.
Which are.
Or may be established.
Or may be established.
For the government thereof.
For the government thereof.
And that I will endeavor to support.
And that I will endeavor to support.
Maintain and defend.
Maintain and defend.
The Constitution of said state.
The Constitution of said state.
Not inconsistent with.
Not inconsistent with.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
To the best of my knowledge.
To the best of my knowledge.
And ability. So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, five point four, board appointment.
One second, Mayor. Let me get. The calendars.
Who did that? Oh, his personal calendar. Okay.
So during the required organizational meeting that we're having tonight, the board commissioners shall set the board commissioners' regular meeting schedule. The regular meeting schedule must be set yearly during the organizational meeting according to general statute one fifty three A dash forty. The town of Silver City municipal code, section two dash thirty six, also states that the board of commissioners shall regularly meet once a month at such time and place as the board commissioners shall designate. The schedule of regular meetings adopted by the board of commissioners shall be kept with the town clerk and published on the town's website. So you'll see on page sixteen of twenty two, that is the calendar that sets one meeting per month as was discussed and we changed the code at the last board meeting. So on page seventeen, you will see the town of Silver City twenty six holiday schedule, which the board of commissioners also approved, as well as the planning we concluded for informational purposes, the planning board and board of adjustment meeting schedule. You will note Monday, January twelfth, is also one of the board of commissioners' regular meetings, but that meeting has been moved up to five thirty, or pardon me, five P M. So it will be done in time for the board of commissioners' six thirty meeting. And this, we're not, I'm sure if that meeting will be need, that board, pardon me, planning board meeting will be needed at that time. So what we need tonight is a motion to approve the regular meeting schedule, the holiday calendar, as well as the planning board and board of adjustment calendar.
I move that we approve the board commissioners' regular meeting schedule, twenty twenty six holiday calendar, and planning board and board of adjustments meeting schedule.
Sir. Then move the property second that we approve the twenty twenty six calendar along with the board of adjustments calendar. All that paper that'll be known by sign of eye. All opposed having the same right here. And that's a motion carried. Okay, five point four, board appointments.
So again, yearly at the board of commissioners' organizational meeting, there are several different boards and committees that require commissioner, board commissioner involvement in some capacity. And so this again is what we'll do tonight. And so number one, we have the Central Pines Regional Council of Governments Board of Delegates. Currently serving as delegate was former mayor pro temp Louis Spadely. And currently serving as alternate delegate was Commissioner Travis Patterson. So we've had interest from Commissioner Cindy Bray to serve as delegate and alternative delegate was Norma Boone. So what we'll do is we'll do these one at a time and do a motion for each one of these. Okay? So what we need for the Central Pines, and Jack can kind of help me a little bit with what some of these different boards do. He's a little more involved with some of them than I am. And so Central Pines Regional Council Governments Board of Delegates, if y'all want to talk about this, any, if, or is everybody okay with who's willing to serve and so forth and so on? Anybody want to discuss it? Okay, so we need a motion for the service delegate member for Commissioner Cindy Bray. We get a motion for that?
I move that Commissioner Cindy Bray serve as delegate for Central Pines Regional Council.
It's been moved to probably second that Cindy Bray serves as regional delegate for Central Pines. All in favor, let it be known by sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right. Here in none, motion carried.
Now we need a motion to serve as an alternate delegate. Currently, Mayor Pro Temp Travis Patterson is serving as the alternate delegate. And Commissioner Norma Boone has served, has shown interest to serve this term.
Make a motion. Commissioner Boone served as an alternate delegate for Central Pines Regional Council Government.
They move the property second that Commissioner Norma Boone services alternate for the Central Pines delegate, all in favor, let it be known by sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right here. And that's a motion carried.
So the next we have is the Central Pines Rural Planning Organization, the Transportation Advisory Committee member, currently serving as Commissioner Curtis Brown. And Commissioner Brown has shown interest in continuing to serve. Commissioner, is that still your pleasure?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we need a, I move that Commissioner Brown remain the
committee member for the Central Pines Rural Planning Organization.
It's been moved to probably second that Commissioner Brown, Brown remains as the Central Pines Transportation delegate, all in favor, by sign of eye.
Aye.
Having the same right here. And that's a motion carried.
And I'm going to skip the Chatham Chamber of Commerce ex officio member and the Silver City, the SCDU, and do them kind of together.
Good.
Because it'll make more sense. So we also have the Chatham Economic Development Corporation ex officio member and currently serving as Mayor Matthews. The mayor serves as the ex officio member according to the bylaws of the Chatham Economic Development Corporation. The mayor can designate a representative from his or her respective organization to serve if he or she does not wish to serve. Mayor, do you wish to continue serving?
Yes.
All right. So the next we have is the Chatham Chamber of Commerce ex officio board member and currently serving is our mayor pro temp Travis Patterson. And then we have the Silver City Development ex officio board member, as everyone knows as SCDU. And Commissioner Brown served as that role that handed it over to Commissioner or former mayor pro temp, Travis Patterson. And so now we need to delegate an official representative at a meeting for that. And so Travis, you, you serve on both. And so we were thinking, would you, you've done so much for SCDU. Would you wish to continue at the pleasure of the board with SCDU? And maybe recommend another commissioner for the Chatham Chamber of Commerce. Would you wish to be on those?
I'm happy to serve, but if there's anyone else that is interested, I'm, I'm happy to support someone else. I have those positions.
You're, you're okay with both?
I'm okay with both, yeah. But if there's anybody else.
I move that Travis Patterson remain on both motions.
It's been moved to probably second that Commissioner Patterson remain on both boards, all in favor, by sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right. Motion carried. All right. Five point five, fire department.
Yeah, Mayor, there's a, this is from the chief. He provided this memo. They, we were there when they voted.
Yes.
New officer. There's another set of folks that went on that list. So the fire department's asking for the board to adopt this list. It's on page twenty of the pack.
Has everybody looked at it?
Yes, sir. I have a motion to approve the fire department officer.
Second.
It's been moved to probably second that we approve the fire department's election and offices. All in favor, let it be known by sign of eye.
Aye.
All opposed having the same right. Motion carried. That takes us down to old business. Some point one, I'll have recovered.
Not yet. So.
Twenty six master board meeting calendar.
Right. So earlier, we adopted the board commissioners' the regular meeting schedule. Tammy Andrew, Jack Meadows, thought it would be a great idea to do a master, draft a master calendar. And you all know that I love color coding. So I did that. Commissioner Feser, you will love my color coding. So anyway, what, we just wanted to have one master calendar so we'd have one reference point instead of several different calendars all over the year, several different dates. And so what Jack has done, he's combined everything again onto one master sheet. So if you'll note, in yellow, I've highlighted all the regular board of commissioners' calendars, which again are set. That's, that schedule is set by statute. And then the next you'll see is blue, and those are proposed community forums. And the commissioners proposed to for the year. So you'll see one at the beginning of the year and then one at the latter part. And then the next are in gray is the board of commissioners' joint meeting with the county commissioners. We have, remember two of those. And that, those have already been set by the county. And then last, the peach color denotes important functions and other dates. Sir, the North Carolina Main Street Conference, the Rural Center Rural Summit, the North Carolina League of Municipalities City Vision, as well as the National Hideout by the, this held by the Police Department. So this, we're really excited about the North Carolina League City Vision, which will be held in Raleigh this year. And we're hoping that we get a lot of board involvement. The mayor went last year and had a really great time. And Jack and Rihanna and myself are planning on going this year. So we'll extend those invitations out to. So we'll extend those invitations out to everyone else on the board so we can secure those dates. So what we're just asking for tonight is a consensus or consideration of the master calendar to be set as tentative master calendar. And I know that's a mouthful, but I had to word it that way.
Consensus.
We need a consensus.
Sounds good, May.
All right. Sounds good. New business. Managers report.
My man over here.
Government body comment. Motion to adjourn.
Second.